Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Regular meeting, uh, May 26th, 2022, 7:00 PM. We'll call the order. Board members rule call. Mike Gardner.
Angie Rawling.
Harry Percy.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris.
Excuse me. Approval of agenda, approval of the minutes of May 12th, 22. Uh, minutes of May 19th, 22, special meeting, minutes of May 19th, 22, sewer commission meeting. Warrants payroll, May 20th, payroll, May 27th, accounts payable, May 20th, accounts payable, May 21st. Oh, that's for town hall. Accounts payable, May 27th. There's a correspondence that we're going to attach to our webpage in the archives. Uh, excess weight permits, blacktop bids, change of agenda, public comment process. Boards and commissions mission statement, LEMP emergency response plan. Town Hall, executive session for legal litigation, executive session for long mowing, contract discussion. Public comment adjourned, and I'd like to add, um, request for qualifications approval. And let's put that, um, 6A under, right after correspondence.
Request for.
Yeah, request for qualifications, and I'll explain it when we get there.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, approval of minutes, May 12th, 22, select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, discussion?
See any?
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Minutes of May 19th, 2022, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
May 19th, 22, sewer commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions, fractions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Uh, same.
Uh, Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, warrants payroll, May 20th, 2022, $9,229.15.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Payroll, May 27th, 2022, $51,999.71.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Hannah?
Isn't that AP?
Actually, yes, that's an AP, not a payroll.
It's written on there.
It should say AP.
You read it correctly, but that is AP.
Yes.
Okay.
They're right.
I didn't see a payroll, but I have an AP.
It's an AP, not a payroll for that amount. So correction on the motion.
So let me do that again. B, May 27th, 2022, was not payroll, in the amount of $51,999.71, it is accounts payable.
Correct.
Yeah. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any more? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Accounts payable, May 20th, 22, $57,504.20.
That's compute. So moved.
Second.
I have 27.
Uh, all those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, we do have another payroll here, uh, 525.22, in the amount of $10,094.75.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Accounts payable, town hall, May 21st, 22, $10,006.1750.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the accounts payable for May 27th, we have that amount, Tara?
You read that one earlier. We read that.
Oh, that's the $51,000.
Yeah, your mount on the wrong spot.
Sorry, thank you.
Good catch, Hannah.
So that's already been approved, we're good.
Yes, we're good.
We have a correspondence from Walter Klinger that we're going to attach to our, um, webpage and in the archives. Um, it's a BCRC attachment, um, that, from a, from a BCRC meeting. So that'll be attached now. RFQ approval. Request for qualifications, here we go. Overview. This is, um, it's criteria for community and economic development, um, and the RFQ is due on June 17th. The town will develop criteria to identify potential sites that could be used to increase economic development activity within the town. Context and background, COVID-19 has had a major impact on Powell's economy. According to federal data maintained by Vermont Department of Labor, 2020 employment was nearly 28% below 2018 levels. Total wages were down nearly 23%. Furthermore, according to the Department of Taxes, grocery receipts in 2020 were 14% below 2019. Retail receipts were 34% below 2019. However, the pandemic was not the start of Powell's economic difficulties, total jobs have fallen by 64% since 1990. This long decline punctuated by the deterioration of the highly visible Green Mountain Racetrack is the result of several shifting economic trends that have impacted many rural Vermont towns. This project will consider four economic development scenarios, mixed use, residential, commercial, and industrial. Establish criteria consistent with local, regional, and state planning to identify the locations with the highest potential in each scenario. Where amendments to the town plan and/or zoning bylaws might be considered, this project will help draft potential language to that effect. Over the long term, the town will benefit from having identified sites of strong economic development potential as well as projects that can incent specific development investments. The amount of $15,098 is available for consultant services from the municipal planning grant program administered by the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development. An additional match of $1,676.20 is available from the town of Powell. The total project cost not to exceed the available total funds of $16,775. And then there's, there's a whole pile of, there's a timeframe, um, there's submission requirements. Um, municipal, municipality, local project manager contact information, which is Tara. Those are just the bullet points. Do you want to talk about this, um, or that, are we good on the?
I think we're good. If you approve it, it'll be posted, um, on the banner and at the, at the start, it's usually posted more meetings.
If someone has a question, I know we can certainly talk more about it, but, um, I think we all read it to start with. I just wanted to read it for everybody else in the public, um. I think, I think it's a good idea. I think we just go ahead and do this.
I would like to suggest a, a minor adjustment to some of the wording, uh, when it comes to the deliverables. All right, um, the, the first two deliverables say comprehensive review and revision to current bylaws to ensure a mix of commercial and industrial uses, particularly in the downtown and village centers. And then the second one says comprehensive review and revision to current bylaws to assure large industrial uses, particularly in the downtown and village centers. I would like to say, uh, uh, inclusive, but, uh, in, including, but not limited to downtown and village centers in both of those regards. Cause that's, I, I, I questioned the, uh, I'm just questioning the, the feasibility or really the appropriateness of industrial uses in downtown centers.
Well, that's, that's also falls in what we requested, uh, our planning commission to look into.
Oh, right. So I think that, that minor change, it's, you know, we can still look at that area, but let's not, uh, uh, I don't like the word particularly because it has, uh, there's that focus.
Correct. Make a motion to, uh, apply for this, with the changes that, uh, Bob requested.
It's just like an RFP.
Right.
It's just a slightly different process, um, so you're just approving whether I can use that RFP or RFQ.
Make a motion to approve with the changes stated.
I'll second that. Any more discussion or questions? Everybody's comfortable with it, the way, with the changes that we made. Perfect. All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Good catch, Bob.
Um, excess weight permits. Uh, we have one from Consolidated Capitaions. Um, Joel has signed this, signed it yesterday.
So moved.
What's that?
That's the only one?
Only one.
Okay.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, sorry. I know you're waiting for more, I'm sorry, Jamie.
No, that's okay.
Um, all those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
So carried. Thank you. Get this back to you. Um, blacktop bids. Did everybody read the blacktop bids?
Yep.
Um, blacktop and Joel's recommendation, um, let me pull up his email. You have a copy over there? We received this email from Joel today. Couple of bullet points. Had three bidders this year for, um, blacktop, Peckham Road Corp, Basin Brothers, and Wilk paving. Uh, Basin was the low bidder at $136,882. Wilk was the second at $138,320. And Peckham was the high bidder coming in at $163,255. All three have paved in the past with good results. I can recommend Basin for the paving this year. Um, if you go, if we're good with it, we can go ahead with scheduling, um. And just for information, for our information, we have 34, or 32,005.14.31 left from last year. And he put $150,000 in his budget, uh, for blacktopping in for this year. Uh, he chose not to do a lot of paving this year due to pricing. Last year it was 74.75 a ton in place. This year it's about a hundred dollars a ton. We also did not get any class two paving money from the state this year. Uh, the, the enclosed, uh, or the bid summary sheets are enclosed. And then, um, I, let's, let's take care of that and then I'll read his other statement as we, after we take care of that.
Make a motion to follow suit with our road fund's recommendation with Basin.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
This is just a generalization from Joel. Um, we're ahead on grading roads for this year with the drier weather, screening the topsoil pile. Uh, ditching, going to do some blacktop patching when they get caught up. The intersections need sweeping and going to start roadside mowing this coming week, plus culverts that need replacing and helping with the town office construction when it's needed. Uh, that's respectfully from Joel. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to report one thing, um, we bought that roller last year to go on our grader. Um, that's been attached and they're using it.
And the sweeper too, right?
Yeah, we have the sweeper too. Um, I, I personally have seen the, the roller in operation. I don't know if everybody has. Um, and I don't know how much dirt road travel you guys do, but everybody knows that I drive around a lot with my dogs. Um, I think it was a great investment. I think we were advised great by Joel. You know, I think there's a couple of things, our roads seem to be the ones that were graded earlier and that, the, the roller was not used on. Don't seem to be as good as the ones that have been graded and holding up as well as the ones the roller has been used on.
Able to compact it.
That's right. So, so I think it was, it was a wise investment and I, I think long term we'll be happy with that. That's just my opinion. What does work? Okay. Brings us to change of agenda and public comment process. Um, so I've had some, I've had a little bit of feedback, um, on, on our agenda and public comment portion of it. And we discussed it a little bit, um, with those people. I'd like to, I'd like to add a public comment piece at the very beginning after we do, um, roll call, after we do the approval of the agenda. I'd like to add a public comment portion, and I think that's the appropriate place to put it, unless somebody has something else that they would like to, that's totally fine. Um, and that would be just for general public comment about things that are going on in town, somebody that just has a public comment.
Last meeting, somebody thought about.
Public comment.
Yep.
Yep, I'd like to add that. I'd still like to try to keep it at a three minute, um, comment period. Cause I don't want to, I don't want to make them, I don't want to lengthen the meetings out. We already do that too much, don't we, Angie?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and then the other piece that I'd like to add is, um, when we have a an item on our agenda, I don't want to call it a large ticket item, but, um, something that may spur some public comment.
Um,
Jamie?
A hot topic.
Yeah, yeah, something, you know, something out there. Uh, before, before we vote as the select board, I'd like to put a, a, a public comment period on, you know, I don't, like, like excess weight permits. I don't think we need a public comment there. I don't think we need public comment on blacktop bid. That kind of stuff. But other things, I, I think, you know, there, I think there's certain things that pop up periodically. I don't really see anything on this particular agenda that would require a public comment. But I think if we have a, you know, something that could be a little contentious or, or, you know, it's a little, you know, could kind of go either way, whatever, I think, add in a public comment period.
And I think that should be this discretion of the chair of that night.
Well, I, I think, I, and I'm fine with that, but I, I would be, um, I'd feel better.
No, that we all under.
That it was, that it was a board decision.
Right.
I, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to be, okay, we're going to do public comment for this because I think it's important. I think us as a select board should make that decision on the agenda stuff that night.
And, I mean, we usually know what's going to be a hot topic or contentious, you know? And Bob, discuss it ahead of time.
I, I think it's a good idea, um, but I, but I would be perfectly comfortable if, uh, if it was up to, if it was the chair's discretion when we get to those votes.
That's fine.
I'd be perfectly comfortable with that, but I think, uh, and again, to be clear, are you saying we put one, uh, we put, we move public comment? Or we add an additional public comment toward the beginning, um, changing the subject from the individual, from the, uh, from the individual item to public comment being at the beginning or at the end? Are we saying that, that we think there should, ought to be one at both ends? And then your discretion as to whether or not, uh, uh, individual items would warrant a public comment?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that's what I'm looking for.
I think I, I agree with that totally, because some people, some people are joining just to, just to make a public comment and they
Right.
And they're forced to wait through the whole, uh, the whole meeting. Um, and then the one at the end allows them to comment on what they saw.
Right, which I, which I think we need to leave that in place, um, you know, for, for our constituents. And I, and I'm totally fine with the, if the board's totally fine with me or the board chair at this time, which is me or, you know, Bob. If, if you guys are totally fine with that, I'm fine with that. I just, you know, I like to include everybody here because we're all, we're all a team and that's how I look at it. Right now, Powell is a, Powell has a team approach that's working really well.
You have a hand up right now.
So, um,
Can I ask a question? Are you going to do public comment before executive sessions also if there's no, um, action going to be taken so they don't have to wait through? We always try to do that, right?
We, we could move, we could move our public comment to prior to executive session if it's on there. I think that's probably a good idea too.
Yeah, that's fair.
You know, tonight we can't, but that's, that's right. Tonight we couldn't do it, but in the future, um, we sure could move, you know, public comment after the general stuff. And then, and then maybe we want to have a public comment after our executive.
If we have.
If we had action taken. So, so I guess we're adding in a whole bunch of public comments, but I think, I think it gives people, and, and I think we do have a hand up right now of, if someone would like to speak on this. And that's fine. Let's, let's go ahead.
Hi, I just, hi, hi there. You can hear me, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, um, thank you for this change. I think that's really great. Um, it's, I've been going a lot to the Bennington select boards and that's how they do public comment at the beginning. And then they just, after the board discusses, they ask if the public has any questions, um, so that's cool. Do you mind if I do a really quick public comment right now because I can't stay for the whole meeting? I'm a little crazy with Mayfest. Um, can I just, it's an announcement, it's not anything to do with.
Could you just state your name, Jamie, so that everybody else knows who you are?
Sorry, Jenny Dewar, Powell. Um, I just wanted to jump in and let you all know, if you, if you, if you haven't seen it, that Mayfest is this weekend, rain or shine. It's on Saturday from 10 to 5. Um, we have 18 individual performers playing, including some Powell folk. Um, Cindy Legg is going to be playing, uh, Anne Marie Jarvis is going to be playing. Um, it's going to be really great, I hope, well, it is, just bring umbrellas. And, um, the other thing that we're starting is, uh, Thursday Night Live, that's going to start a week from tonight. Every Thursday through September 29th, so that's 18 Thursdays, we're doing live performances at the Merchants Park, which is affectionately known as the Splash Pad, right off of Four Corners in Bennington. So, um, I just want to be sure that Powell is aware of all of this stuff going on as well, because we're just down the road, so that's it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Um, and then, uh, Mike, if I could make a public comment? I know everybody's going to Mayfest to hear my wife sing, but we are a sick family. We may not be able to make it. Jenny, my apologies.
Oh, man. I'll be really disappointed because she's such, she's, I love her, she sings my music, I love it. So I hope you all get better and I hope you're able to be there. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so our public comment changes, just to recap, would be a public comment at the beginning after we approve the agenda. We would do a public, we would move our end of night public comment to you prior to executive session. And then, uh, we would have a public comment per agenda item and you guys want it on board chair discussion. Is that, is that what we're looking for?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
As long as we keep it to, you know, three minutes.
Well, yeah, no, no, that's right, that's right. And then we should make that, we should make that point that it, that it needs to stay to three minutes, you know, unless we can, you know, if we're going really fast, but that's.
Yep.
No, I'm fine with that. Did I get a second?
Yeah.
Any more discussion on that? Uh, all those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Perfect. Um, I asked for, or we asked for, um, mission statements from our boards and commissions, and they have provided it for us. So I'm going to read these, they're not long. Angie? Um, I want to read these into the minutes and we'll add them into the minutes anyway.
Why are you saying my name?
You're going away. You're telling me I talk too much, but I want these entered into the minutes. Our boards and commissions mission statements, Parks and Recreation, mission statement. The town of Powell Parks and Recreation Committee purposes to enrich the quality of life for all residents and to build a sense of community. Recognizing the unique value that Powell's vast natural resources offer, the committee will work to develop diverse recreational opportunities on town-owned properties and to cultivate partnerships with other local groups to further our mission. 2022 goals, support the Borac project, seek community input and grant funding for development of Center Street Park. Assist with the Pollinator Gardens, expand partnerships with community groups. And when we get to the town hall, we'll talk about the Pollinator Gardens a little bit. All right, um, Development Review Board, the mission of the Powell DRB is to hear all permit appeals and render a fair and reasonable decision we believe will benefit the town as a whole. The Planning Commission. Uh, the Planning Commission is charged with setting the overall policy and goals for land development and use in town. Primary functions of the commission are to prepare and amend the town plan and the land use regulations. Uh, we'll enter those into the minutes, um, and, and we'll also post those on our website, please. Local Emergency Management Plan. Um, there's no changes in this from last year. Um, I would, I would definitely like to add one thing that actually came about today. So when we, when we have a local emergency management plan, municipal adoption that we're talking about here, um, in the past, we have basically, kind of, we, we sign the plan and then, um, at least my experience is, we don't really know what goes on from there. One thing that I will tell you that came about today is that, um, our emergency management coordinator, Craig Odell, along with some other people, has scheduled a class slash meeting slash whatever you want to call it for June 13th and invited me to go to it on, um, uh, an active shooter in a school. Um, we're going on the 13th, I'm going to incorporate some, um, some bus drivers. Um, there's, there's, we're, he's already started looking into some grant funding for this. And, you know, I'm not sure when he started working on it. I don't think it was obviously too long ago, but, um, that's, that's something that's going to be critical and we're trying to be proactive. We had a, Craig and I had a pretty lengthy discussion on that today. So, you know, we say, we, we, we signed this and we kind of, we act on it once a year and there it goes away, but this is what, this is one of the many things that they're doing, um, for what, for what happens.
Are they going to incorporate a stop to bleed for people in the class also?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, generally that's the ones that I've done in the past, that's what they've done is incorporated both pieces.
This is, this is going to be a pretty extensive thing from what I understood, you know, Craig, today, um, you know, we both were working and took time out of our day to talk with each other, basically. Um, but, you know, we're going to try to, we're going to try to come up with some plans and, and, um, you know, it's not going to happen on, on, excuse me, the 13th, obviously, but we're going to, we're going to start some communication.
Yeah, get the ball rolling.
Find out what our, what our needs could be potentially, what, what they are, whatever. There's a lot of stuff in it. Um, you know, and, and the fire is involved, EMS is involved, there's. Um, you know, and there fires involved, EMS is involved. There's, there's a lot of pieces.
Right.
To get going here.
And there's, there's, it's a whole different scenario when you're walking into that type of sit.
It could be.
Situation. So.
There's a lot of stuff that could be happening, so. Um, I'm, I'm going probably as two people, really. I'm going as, as a select board member and.
A supervisor.
That's right. Transportation for the, for the school, so I'll have two roles. Um, so we have to approve this, right? The local man, emergency management plan, the way it's written?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
All right, here's.
Everything's current on it?
Yeah, I checked all the numbers.
Uh, all those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Um.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, town hall.
Um, we were going to talk about mold re- remediation or inspections, but Rebecca said that there are uh, reports somewhere, so I'm going to try to find them and we'll revisit it if we need to. Um, other than that, I'd just like to state that we're going to have a special meeting next week, June first, all about town hall.
At six o'clock, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, and we're going to try to, uh.
And that's a Wednesday, correct?
It's Wednesday, June first, at six PM. And I would really and truly, um, I'd really truly like to ask everyone that attends that meeting, whether they're public or, or, you know, air in person or Zoom, um, to stay on topic. Um, I don't want to get into a he said, she said portion of anything. Um, we will present a, I believe we're going to present a budget. Um, I believe we're going to present a plan moving forward. Um, and we will take questions and answers or questions on that. Um, but we're not going to get into a, well, that's not what I thought was going to happen or, or anything like that. I, I think we really need to stay focused on moving forward with the project. There's, there's no need to go backwards. We, we've already, we're already here. We don't need to go back and try to get there again. Um, I, I really want to try to stay focused on, on just keep charging forward on this whole, on this whole entire project.
Can you just make a suggestion?
Of course.
Um, since that's going to be June first and we have a couple of days, if somebody has a question, don't you think it'd be wise for them to email it to Tara so we can have it, be prepared ahead of time?
Sure. Great idea. I'll do that.
And I've also invited, uh, Joyce Halt from the Historical Society to join us.
And Eric's going to be here, our, our project manager for this, for this portion of what's going on. And, and Eric was also instrumental in the first portion.
Even if they had questions for Eric ahead of time, so he will know the answer or the price of something or the cost of something.
Exactly.
Definitely, right, please.
Help everything flow.
I, I know that we, this week I was down here, um, I was down here yesterday and then I, I was on a conference call, so to speak with everybody today. I couldn't make it down here today to meet with everybody. We've made a couple of design changes in the, in the parking and, and sidewalks and, and so on and so forth for now. It's, it's a cost savings. Um, and, and that is as long as we can with, after verifying with the state that we can do away with some of the sidewalks, which brings me to the pollinate, pollinating gardens. Um, it's going to increase, potentially increase the area for them to have access to. Um, you know, and, and I think it'll look better anyway. You know, aesthetically, at the end, at the end of the project, I think it'll look better than, than having a concrete sidewalk. You know, where we could have pollinating gardens where we don't need a sidewalk.
Right.
Okay. As long as we can through, through the state, you know, that we're in the process of, this, these changes all came about kind of yesterday. So we have to go to the state, make sure fire and safety, do all this, you know, it's not just to go ahead and do it. We have to check with our engineer.
Right.
You know, and make sure that we can make these changes, but, you know, I, I think they're, I think we're fine. Um, and it's, it's most, it's, it's a cost savings. It was some redundancy that we didn't think we needed. Um, just some different things. Okay?
Ranger Heights was here Tuesday that, and, uh, took the tree down and did the prep work for the move for the school.
That's correct.
So.
Yeah, I didn't even notice.
I know. How did you not notice that tree mess?
I don't know. I didn't notice.
Um, I believe, uh, we didn't get an update from Eric on.
He asked if we wanted one, but I told him that we were good for tonight because we're going to be.
Because we'll talk about it next week. Okay. So next week, on, on the first, we should have a really good.
Information.
Timeline, um, on, on the whole next portion of what's going on. Um, they'll be able to explain, or we will be able to explain, um, why things were done the way they were at, at the old schoolhouse. There was reason for it. Um, the long-term plan or the, you know, the plan moving forward, I met with Eric and, and a representative from Miles Lumber is to leave the windows, the high windows. Um, we may change the windows to an energy efficient window.
Correct.
But we're going to leave the aesthetic look of the high windows. As, as if the board decides that, that's, that's kind of our long, you know, was our plan moving forward. Um, so we were doing a cost comparison on a insulated window versus just an old single pane storm window. Okay, we were, we were doing some cost comparison. All of this stuff, all of these things that are going on, they're not just willy-nilly. There's a lot of research that has gone into all of this with Eric and myself and Miles Lumber and Tara's been involved in this extensively, and I think Kano's been in, involving some of this. And then Tara's more and, and, um, you know, so all of these things, all of these things are definitely not just, like I said, a willy-nilly type of, type of thing. Any questions?
Yeah, a big quick comment is, uh, um, I really do want to be part of that conversation, obviously. I will be, uh, if everything goes to plan, I will be traveling next week and I'll be in a different time zone. So I very likely will not be able to attend. Uh, so in advance, my apologies for not attending. Uh, if there's any way I can swing it, I will zoom in.
If there's anything you want me to, uh, speak on your behalf for, please let me know.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, if you'd like, you know, if there's anything, any comments that you want, please get them to Tara and we'll make sure that we take care of it. So, moving right on, um, executive session, uh, for legal litigation. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session for legal litigation as, um, it could, if we don't do an executive, it could, um, adversely affect the town. Um, there may be action after.
Do we want to ask that?
Can I add something really quickly? I was going to say, do you want to ask him if he has a comment? Because you're about to clear the room.
That's a good idea, Rebecca. Sir, do you, do you have a comment, a public comment, or are we just?
I just tried hard right now.
Okay.
Okay. Because you were sitting here, I just want, great idea, Rebecca. If you had a public comment, I'd like to give you the opportunity to.
I just, I just need to run out things to run first before I.
Okay.
Tell me. I don't want to just.
Okay.
Get myself in trouble, which I usually do anyway. But thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for legal litigation.
Second.
All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike? Aye. And there may be action taken when we come out. Litigation, and at this time, there will be, uh, no action taken. Um, so the next executive session is lawn mowing, contract discussion, and I think we can do some of this discussion out of executive session, and then I think we need to go in for some of it. And, um, when we go in, we'll decide, I, I'm sure we'll take action coming out of that one. But for now, we can start the lawn mowing, contract discussion, um, out of executive.
Okay, well, uh, at this point, I am here on behalf of panel youth baseball in this regard. Uh, we use the three forty-six ball field and thank you to the town for the use of the ball field. Um, the property is not being maintained adequately. Uh, the grass is routinely left to grow to almost a foot tall. Uh, we have purchased a used riding lawnmower in order to keep up with it. Uh, we have now had, since we started the season, we've had to mow the field down there ourselves four times now. Uh, we had it parcy mowed and I was informed by our treasurer yesterday that, uh, the individual that has the contract came down, saw we had parcy mowed it, he came down to finish it and said, nope, and left. I don't know how true that was. That's what I was told by our treasurer, that he declined, declined to finish mowing it because we.
Brian, Brian, this part needs to be an executive. I'm sorry. I did not know that this was going to be discussed in that manner. Yep, um, um, from what I understood, the issue was that the contract only says certain months. It's only June to July. Um, and so actually the baseball season is not being mowed by the town. That will need to be discussed the rest of that in executive session, but that's the general issue that the public, uh, can hear now. Okay? Sorry to interrupt, but got to do it.
Oh, you're right. That's fine. Thank you.
But just before we go in, we need to state that it states July first in the contract.
That was going to be my question. Our, our RFP, our RFP that was sent for, that this, this individual is working off on his contract that he signed and the select board signed, what does that state for the three forty-six ball field?
July one, twenty twenty-two through July thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Right, for the, for the month of July, July one.
So when we're making accusations, we prob, no, I'm talking right now. When we're making accusations, we probably should know what we're talking about. Before we start making accusations about anybody, no matter what the contract is about, whether or not they're following the contractor, doing their job, moving forward.
Okay.
So.
That's why we need the executive session because I personally didn't realize that it only did partial of the baseball season. Um, I apologize that I missed that.
Can I direct you?
Because it's been that way forever. When I, you know, when my brother, my brother's forty-four years old and I started in the, I started working in the, in helping out and coaching and doing whatever when my brother was nine years old, so do the math. That's how long I was involved in it. Been that way, it's been that way forever.
So I just, I, I wanted that out there before we went into executive session.
Okay, and the other issues that you guys will be discussing regarding this contract, from what I understand, are the acquisition of a piece of property that we recently had. There needs to be negotiation regarding the price of mowing around that acquisition. And then you said something else, Mike, that I was unaware of, the racetrack property, is that what you said?
That's right.
Yes.
That's right. He had, he has some recommendations, um, on, our, our contractor has some recommendations on the cemetery at the racetrack. Um, has some recommendations on the, um, ball field area at the racetrack as well. I also want to point out that there was a question, Tara asked me this question the other day about debris on the outside of a couple of the cemeteries. Um, that is debris that has fallen onto the outside of the cemeteries. Any debris since he has taken over the contract that he has cleaned up has been removed. He doesn't put anything on the outside. Um, previous contractors have put stuff onto the outside of them in places. But I know you asked me that question, so I, I asked a, I, I asked a question.
Make a motion to go into executive session for lawn mowing, contract discussion.
Second.
Uh, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Abstain.
Mike? Aye.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
No, they're letting more people in.
Oh, sorry. Anna, will you yell at me next time for that?
She's busy. She's trying.
I know.
Focusing.
It's focusing.
I know she is. I'm just picking on her. Good? Um, I believe there's going to be a motion on the, um, Oak Hill Cemetery, um, lawn mowing.
Make a motion to accept, uh, Tristan's bid to add the Oak Hill Cemetery mowing to the town, uh, present contract.
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Uh, I don't know if I should abstain. You should. Okay.
I don't know.
I abstain.
I, I don't think, I don't think you have to abstain from that because it's separate from.
Yeah, I, I'm in partial. I'm in favor of adding it. I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that.
We're adding Oak Hill. You don't have to abstain. This is Oak Hill.
Okay, well, then I vote aye.
Uh, I abstain. Motion carries. We're good. Um, any public comment?
So, yeah, well, that's what I was waiting for, was you to get to public comment.
Oh, okay. Uh, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Fine. So if, I'd like to go if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Brian Ayres, North Panel, on behalf of Panel Youth Baseball, I apologize my previous comment. Uh, I was unaware of the full aspects of the contract for the mowing, so I apologize for what I had to say.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Anybody with their hand up to handle? No hands up?
Hands up.
You want to make a comment? Take yourself off of mute.
Yeah, anybody that can't get in for whatever reason or can't get your hand up, if you want to make a public comment, please unmute yourself.
Date your name and.
Looks like we're good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.